Good evening and welcome to the June 3rd, number four budget session, hopefully the final one. Hope everyone's doing alright tonight. We'll get started. And invocation and pledge, Commissioner Melissa Hyatt. Everyone please stand.
Gracious Lord, we come before you with humble hearts, grateful for the opportunity to serve our community. Thank you for the trust placed in us and for the resources that we are stewards of. May we honor that responsibility with wisdom and with care. As we gather to make decisions that will shape the lives and support our neighbors, grant us the clarity of mind, the calmness of spirit, and the unity of purpose in this budget process. Help us to listen with compassion and to speak with respect and to act with integrity. We are grateful for each other, for this community, and for the chance to do meaningful work for our county. These things we ask your guidance and your hand of gentle presence. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where we stand, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Commissioner Hyatt. Next is the approval of the agenda. I have a motion.
Motion.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Goins, I'll second that. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Next, County Manager Chris Knopf.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Before I get into this, there was something I failed to announce last night. At the May 19th meeting, as you recall, just as the meeting started, the power went out at the Government Center, which is where our servers are located. And of course, the meeting was then able to be aired live. Of course, it was aired delayed in the following days. And the reason that occurred is Surryacan Electric was performing maintenance. And they were unaware that our meeting was taking place. And the appropriate people in county government had not received an email notification about it beforehand. So therefore, that's why it occurred. That's the one county building in Dobson that's on Surryacan Electric. All the others are on Duke Energy. And that's why it occurred. And wasn't our staff, wasn't anything that we could control. And I do believe going forward though, we'll have better communication with Surryacan. And just want to make that an announcement publicly. Also, as you know, we are following a little different calendar this year. Just so everybody's clear, in the past, you'd have a recommended budget, first meeting in June presented. Then you'd have a work session, then you'd have your public hearing. And generally, the budget would get adopted following a public hearing at that second Commissioners' meeting. This year, it's different. We've had the recommended budget at the end of May. You had your public hearing last night, and the work session follows the public hearing. So at any point now, the budget can be adopted. A version of the budget can be adopted. You do not have to wait for your next regular meeting, which would be the 16th. So if you come to agreement tonight, you can adopt it tonight. If you don't, you can come back together at another night or on the 16th. So I just want to make sure everybody was clear that you're free and clear to do as you please at this point. And so to kind of get you started, as usual, we've put together sort of a topics list to get you started with some of the major items, as well as some other information you probably want to review. And of course, individual board members have the opportunity to add items as they see fit. So I'll turn it back over to you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, first on our list is the property tax rate. And I would like to suggest to move that down, further down in the list, so we can discuss these other topics before we try to set that tax rate. Is everyone in agreement with that? Because I believe we're going to juggle some numbers around tonight, and it might be a wise idea to hold off on that.
I agree with that, Mr. Chairman.
Good?
Great, yes.
Alright, so we'll drop that way on down. Alright, next is schools' ADM current expense. $1,330 per student, currently at $1,320 per student. Any comments on that? Everybody good with that?
I'm good.
Everybody talking at once?
I'm good, Mr. Chairman.
Alright. Alright, we're starting off good. Schools' ADM capital, $339 per student, currently $312, an 8.1% increase. Are we good with that?
What is... How did you arrive at that number, 339?
In the Dedicated Capital Improvement Program, there's a carve-out for the PEGO capital, which is the annual capital expense for students or for the school systems. And in the last decade, it's been capped at 3 million. And this year, we've raised that cap to 3.25 million. As I said before, it's been 3 million for a decade. So basically, you take the number of students, divide it in that number, that's how we come up with the...
Real quick, so I don't have to look it up. No, here it is. So we've got 879 in Elkin. That's in-county students. There's of course about 250 out of county. We got 1723 in Mount Airy, 1723. And... What do we... Wait a minute. What have we got? Okay, yeah. Yeah, but it's based on ADM. So Surry County, I see. Surry County's, okay, 6,960. 6,960 Surry County schools. And Mount Airy, 723. So... What'd you increase that from? What were we at last year, Chris?
3 million total.
3 million total, which, what does that come out to for the ADM?
It was $312 last year.
312. So let's just, for instance, see. Every $10. So we got... We got 9,000, 9,000. 9,562.
It would be...
Times $10.
For that 3 million from last year with the ADM this year, it would be $313.74 per student.
So every $10 is 95,000, if my calculations would be correct there. So... I mean, if we're looking to save money, I mean, I don't, if we could, you know, round it down to about 330, that's $9. $9 times 9,562, that's $86,000. I mean, that's just a thought. I didn't know. I mean, I know there's pressing capital needs, but everything's pressing everywhere. So I don't know that anything's...
Yeah.
Is...
Oh, you're venturing to propose a figure of...
Well, I'm just looking to, I'm just looking, I mean, these are extraordinary times. I mean, you know, it's not every day that you run up under a set of economic circumstances like we were seeing.
I understand.
And we changed our capital formula the prior year to make it what we considered more fair and base it on ADM, so Surry County would get a more appropriate amount because they have the greatest capital needs. So I think Surry County, you know, I think certainly they would still be in good shape. And, you know, I think the other two schools are in good shape. I think they'll tell you they're in good shape. I mean, I know we got all kinds of, you know, unforeseen things that always come up, you know, HVAC and stuff like that. But, I mean, if we're looking for a savings run here, I mean, I don't know what cutting $9 off of it would hurt. Is that...
I don't have a problem with that.
I kind of agree with you on Elkin and Mount Airy. They should be in good shape.
They're in good shape, yeah.
And this right here is not going to rebuild those three high schools.
Oh, no, certainly not, no.
So I'm inclined to go along with that.
I mean, that's still given an increase over the previous year, correct?
Yeah, they're at 312 this year.
Yeah.
It would be an increased total, the total number would come to 3,155,460.
Yeah, so...
That would be the total number from the 3 million last year.
I mean, I'm willing to entertain anything the board. I thought I'd just bring this up for discussion. I mean, whatever.
I think that's something I could live with. I could get on, I could get on board with that.
Mr. Goins?
I can, I can live with it.
Mr. Hyatt, good?
Yeah.
Alright, nothing checked more.
Yeah, it gets us 95,000, I think, or 86?
86, 58.
$58.
So we're going 330.
I'm good with that.
Alright. So Surry County Schools Supplement Funding, $350,000, a $50,000 increase, 14.3% increase. Any thoughts? Good?
Yes, I can, I can agree to that.
Yeah, and I guess my thing is, and maybe Commissioner Goins knows this, I don't know. You know, I want to see the people that's lowest paid, the classroom people, get the lion's share of what we do.
My understanding that this is, that is where this goes, is to, is to people in the classroom, TAs, and not to, not to central office or administration.
Yeah, because, I mean, these people, not to disparage them, please, but they're making a lot more money. Some of their raises are equivalent to a year's pay of a classroom teacher, for heaven's sake.
Correct, correct.
Okay, I'm good with it, yeah.
Mr. Hyatt?
I'm good with that.
Alright, increase of $50,000 to $350,000. Alright, Alternative Education Program, not included. The request was $500,000. I'd like to say first that I think it's a grand idea, and it's very needed in this county. And we used to have an alternative school. And it's a big need, but this is, and I've reiterated this to several people, that this is not a good year to add 500,000 for the school. I just don't think the budget can sustain it this year.
I'll say I think it's a good idea in theory. I think that, as you said, it's bad timing, but I think there's other ways we can accomplish this without adding 500,000 to the budget.
I'm a no on it, yeah.
I'm good.
Alright. Not included. Millennium Charter Academy Request, not included.
That's two things. That's their capital request and their request for one-third of an SRO.
I would like to recommend that we fund one-third of their SRO at the same level that we've discussed with the Mount Airy City Schools. Given the fact that they have over 400 students in that school that are our county kids, I feel like that we can find 28,333 for them.
I'll say to that, Commissioner Hyatt, that I hadn't always been the first one to jump up and look for new expenses. But, you know, it is, we live in a day and time when every school needs an SRO officer. And...
You're correct.
Even though I have turned away from getting into funding their capital needs this year, we have discussed fully last night that their per-student allocation is like everybody else, 1320. But on that one issue concerning Millennium Charter Academy, and it's something you never take back, and I always say this on an SRO officer, it'll be now and forever. And if that's, it seems like the public expects and demands that there be an SRO officer at every school, I think the model that we discussed last night typically is that Mount Airy kind of looked, and the municipalities, four of them, and the county at one time, kind of looked after that responsibility for the schools that existed in their municipalities. But if it, if it's going to be the difference of we don't get one versus us participating, and I do anticipate that cost share to always go up, not down. But be that as it may, I'm willing to consent on that and provide the same amount for the charter, Millennium Charter Academy, that they're asking for our share in the other Mount Airy City School System this year.
Didn't agree with you on that. It is needed. They are left out over there without one, and as Mr. Crossham said last night, it kind of puts us off-target on them. And I think it should be, should be, we should step up and go third with that and fund it.
I'm good. I'm good with it as well.
I'm good too, and I'd like to thank Mount Airy for funding part of that, and who funded the other part of it?
Grant.
Grant.
A grant, yeah.
Thanks, school systems for applying for the grants.
Yeah.
Yeah, we...
I appreciate the fact that they applied for the grant before they asked for help. They looked for their own dollars first.
What is the exact amount, Chris?
$28,333.
That's Mount Airy City Schools.
But we...
We're saying we want to do the same thing.
Yep.
Same.
Same thing?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, what about the capital request? And I think Mr. Tucker touched on that. I'm not, I'm not in favor of the capital request at this time because we cannot claw that back if something happens.
Actually, well, actually get a decent trust now.
Yeah, we can. There is a mechanism whereby going forward, the dollars we invest there, we might could have some clawback. But nonetheless, we have opened up that conversation this year for this budget. I'm gonna agree with you, Mr. Chairman, and I'm gonna say we do not participate in capital funding of Millennium Charter Academy this year.
You good? Alright. We will match Mount Airy with $28,333 for Millennium Charter. And I'd like to thank all the folks who came last night, that were very passionate about it, and that hit us off. So thank you very much. Mount Airy City Schools Requested Tax Rate of 106, Revenue Neutral 102. Our district, got any thoughts on that?
I ain't even going to... What would that be at revenue neutral?
10.2 cents.
Yeah, I'm saying, what's the amount?
Little down the road.
I don't think, on the bottom there, it's 11, it's 11.
Are you asking what the collection would be?
Yes.
At 97%, at the revenue neutral tax rate, it would be $969,911.
Is that...
And then, of course, there's motor vehicle taxes on another page.
I guess what I'm asking on this, the current rate, the current rate is... Those numbers aren't right on this sheet, are they? Are they right on the sheet and not on the, on this, on the sheet that we have? Different. Requested tax rate and revenue neutral.
Yeah, Mount Airy City Schools Revenue Neutral should be 938.
They're wanting 969.
Okay, they're wanting, okay, I see what you're saying. It says revenue neutral here.
Yeah, that's a mistake.
Okay, okay.
Yeah, you're right.
Including the...
Or not.
This is.
I'm sorry, I just make sure we're right.
Page, the front page, and in the back page is the motor vehicle tax.
Okay, I got you here. So at, so at 938, what would it be at, I mean, we collect at 99, right?
99.1.
Yeah, so we collect at, but at 98, what would, what would 938 be?
So at 98% collection, 938 would be $979,910.
And at 10, at 10, 1006, what would it be?
At 98% collection, that would be $1,107,361.
Do those include vehicular tax revenues?
No, those are on the same page.
107, 160, is that right?
$1,107,361.
361.
They're, even at a revenue neutral rate, they're going to have more money than last year. Is that not correct?
Yes, that's correct.
Time or split the difference, or revenue neutral?
I'm good, I'm good with where we're at. If they're gonna get more, they're gonna get more anyway. I'm good.
You mean revenue neutral?
Revenue neutral, yes.
I'm good with revenue neutral.
Alright, revenue neutral, Mount Airy City Schools. Elkin City Schools Tax Rate 126, Revenue Neutral, 1161.
It'd be 1162.
1162.
And we need, well, my opinion is that that needs to stay revenue neutral as well.
I'm good with that.
I'm good.
Revenue neutral. Alright, then it's for high schools. 65 million.
These next two are included on this list because both the school system and the college, when the recommended budget was released, followed up with staff about these two requests, which would inevitably be rolled into some sort of future debt issuance and would not be in the annual operating budget. Not that you have to discuss it tonight, but I'm just bringing that to your attention. We can follow, follow up with them at some point in the future, but just letting you know they did follow up about those two. know they did follow up about those two.
That would probably be a Doug Carter meeting and a.
Beginning for a future date.
Yeah.
Yep.
Yeah.
Both of those, SDC and SDS.
Yeah, if you remember at the retreat, Andrew came up and we, I think we looked at the, you know, hypothetical fifty million at some point and played with the model and, you know, these would, these would inevitably roll up into something like that. May not be fifty million, but.
Right.
Yeah, whatever the board decides. I just want to bring it to your attention because I'm sure they're gonna follow up with you as well.
Okay.
All right.
So what is the consensus of the board tonight?
Wait until.
Wait until.
Further discussion.
Schedule it with the. All right, Volunteer Fire Department request, three volunteer fire departments requested tax increases.
I mean, I think, I think you wait until you guys finish and you, you know, I know we're talking about fire commission and I think we need to, we need to talk about that, what, you know, what that's gonna look like across the board, across the county. And also, I think, you know, on our side, there's two hundred and fifty thousand dollars that we currently pay, that moves back to the, that moves to the fire service side as well. So that, that gives us two hundred and fifty thousand on, on the, back on the county side. Needed in the budget for other things.
Yes.
All right, I'll make sure I got everybody on. Okay, Volunteer Fire Department grant, fifty thousand for Westfield.
One thing, Mr. Chairman, and maybe I just missed this, are we going revenue neutral? In the fire districts?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Most will see a bump anyway.
Yes.
Yep.
What do you say?
Again, I think you, you've had a few people request the fifty thousand. We have not, we've not done this in the past. If things were tight, I think the fire departments that are requesting have gotten it in recent years, and so I feel like we just hold off on that fifty thousand this year. And if we can do it next year, we'll, we'll put it back in the budget.
In agreement.
Mr. Tucker?
I'm good.
All right, other new request, Mountain Valley Hospice, ninety-five thousand, three hundred and eighty-six. Need to take these one at a time, right?
Well, I, I listed these because, you know, we went to the online portal this year for nonprofit applications for county money, county dollars in the budget. We call it neighborly, that's what it's called, neighborly. And there's a frame of time, and I guess in January where it opens up and people can apply for funds, and the usual suspects, you know, all use that system. Then we had these new requests, none of which were recommended, just the year we're having, it was impossible to include anything new. I'm just pointing out that these, in case there's any discussion, but I just wanted to make sure it was transparent that these were new requests from these three entities.
These are the only new ones other than.
I believe so.
Neighborly, okay.
And then the one right under it came in, did not come in through neighborly, came in just as the recommended budget was being completed early May.
And I will address, I will address, address that. We had a lengthy discussion about when we, when we gave them the old Jones School. You know, we, we explained the situation, how, how, you know, the building was in pretty bad shape, they've done quite a bit of work. We funded for three years, sixty thousand dollars, and we told them at that time, we specifically told them, you know what you're getting. You know, we, we feel like we can help you for three years. We, we, we've met that commitment of sixty thousand per year, and we said, you know, once that's done, we're done. We, we can't, we can't do this any further. So that's, that's my position on it is, you know, we laid it out, we laid it out, said, you know, we're gonna give you time, give you three years where you can get your feet on the ground, do, do fundraising, and they said they understood at that time that this is, you know, we, we understand what we're getting, we understand what you're doing for us, and we said, you know, no, don't expect this in the future. So that's where I'm at with it.
And I agree with that. That is what we told them, and we certainly are pulling for them and wishing them the very best, but to change those rules now would be contrary to what we told them when we agreed to do it the first time. And I say we hold on that and, and we can always look at a future date, but, but for tonight, I agree with the answer, and I'd say we shouldn't do it, should not do it.
I, I believe in doing what you say you do. I wasn't part of the board at that time, but I remember it being said, sitting in that corner over there, so I believe we stick with what we said.
Yes.
I'm good.
All right. Rest in mind, we need to go back to the. Mountain Valley Hospice?
I, I just, I think with these, I, I would say no. I mean, we're not funding them in the past, you know, what's educational foundation, you know, we can fund the school system, I think that's on them to, to get that money elsewhere and not from the county. I, I kind of feel that way about Mountain Valley as well. They get it, they've asked other agencies and, and I feel like, you know, they could fund amazing and I just feel like we, you know, we're, we're strapped, and I just feel like that we can't do that this time.
I concur and not to be cute on the term of the neighborly request. I'd love to be neighborly. To all these organizations, they're all good organizations, they all, I'm sure, do good causes. In fact, I, I know they do, and we have a budget to get through here, and we've already said no to a lot of these others. And because these came in late and came in new, I don't think that changes our philosophy, and I, I would agree that we say no on these three.
I would be in agreement with that.
All right, I'm, I'm, I'm in agreement with that also. So none of these are recommended. All right, capital requests.
So you have this spreadsheet document here in your attachment, and it was at your seat. I'll just go through it, and I didn't go through it in great detail last, at the May nineteenth meeting, but.
Hold it up again, Chris, please.
Where's it at?
Yep.
It's behind this sheet.
Okay.
So those items that you can see what's not recommended, but for public consumption, what was recommended, fifty thousand dollars for an HVAC replacement and permitting and health buildings. That facility is seventeen, eighteen years old now. It is heated and cooled with residential units versus two big units on each side, commercial units or industrial units. So there are a lot of what, what I refer to as residential units out there. So we'll start to see, replace some of those next year, hopefully, and most likely over the next couple of years. Next was at the Elkin Center rear steps, the awning repairs, there are a number of areas that are in disrepair, so forty-five thousand there. We haven't spent any significant money on that building since it was renovated in twenty-eleven. Next is HVAC units on the second floor of this building, as you all are accustomed to over here, we need to get those replaced. And then Health and DSS Building, again HVAC repairs and upgrade. And then on the third floor side, in where we took the old boardroom, we've got some work there we've got to do to, to make that system work with those individual offices over the larger spaces that were there previously. And then for DSS, the seven passenger vehicle at four.
This, Eddie. Bottom of that first sheet.
Next page.
Next page.
Yeah, sorry. Yeah, that's the only thing on that second page for DSS, seven passenger vehicle for CPS.
I heard the presentation that night, I'll just say, they probably need a vehicle, they probably need an all-terrain vehicle. You know, do they need a seven-passenger all-terrain vehicle? I never was really sure why we need to haul multi-passengers in an all-terrain vehicle.
Sometimes you pick up child, a family that may have three or four children, and they've been having to send more than one person to go do that. The all-terrain is because of the conditions of some of the driveways that they travel through county.
Not saying I'm not toward, I'm just saying I, I need a little more information on that. They feel like they have frequent times when they have multiple passengers and they have a need for that.
The number of large families in county custody has grown significantly. On that third page, one flash chute for emergency management, they had requested two. The light blood warmers for EMS, there were two of those.
What, what, what are you, what are you, what do you use a level A flash suit for?
That's a good question. Oh, yeah.
Do they not have any now?
These are replacements.
Well, surprise, surprise, I'm sure it's got an expiration date on it. Yeah. Wonder what they do with the old level A flash suits? Just like the old turnout gear and the old this and the old this, that and the other.
Sell them.
Thousands, well, if they're no good, they're no good. I mean, what do you do, send them to China?
No, we send them to South America.
South America?
We do, really.
I mean, it's, I guess my point, and I'm not trying to be facetious, but tens of thousands, hundreds of thousands of dollars of stuff just expires because somebody says it's no good anymore, and you just. Yeah, I mean, these fire departments in the state, they're killing everybody, they're just.
Not to mention they're forty-eight hundred and thirteen dollars apiece.
Yeah, I mean, it's just like all the radio system. I know everybody hears me preach about this, but, you know, in a few years, they'll come down and say, well, guess what, guys, your radio system ain't no good anymore. You know, another million or two, get you another, and it'll last a few years, but during, while you, while you, while it's, while you're using it, it's gonna cost you about two or three hundred thousand a year just for some kind of subscription to it. You know, it just, not.
Just like VCRs.
Yeah, I mean, it's just.
Okay. Under Emergency Services, the replacement of radios, that's eighty-nine, eighty-six, and the Fire Marshal's Office, replacing one of their mobile computers at forty-nine-hundred. On the next page, Health Department, replacing one pediatric table scale, three thousand dollars, and then Large Equipment, two Cefed, I don't know if that's how you pronounce that, but Cefed machine for lab tests, two of those, thirty thousand apiece. And MIS, one port switch needs to be replaced, forty-nine, ninety, and then the county firewall expires, so we need to replace that at eighty-two-hundred. Next page, page five, only one item here, and that's roof repair at the maintenance shop at, at Fisher River Park. That's the only item recommended on that page. I will mention to you at the bottom there, the Mayberry Fishing Hole, that was supposed to be the next river access, it was a partnership with the city. We had applied for a grant, didn't get it, and I know the city's anxious, city-owned property, but recommendation is, you know, put that off at least a year. Next, at the Sheriff's Office, twelve bay rack station, that's discless, replacing it at three thousand, twenty-two dollars. Then a new canine package at sixteen thousand, three hundred, and then, of course, the.
Is our old canine package not any good anymore?
They retire them at a certain point.
Okay. The, what, a twelve bay rack station, what is a twelve bay rack station?
I believe that's the charging apparatus for their equipment.
Okay.
And then the big item are the forty-eight Motorola in-car camera systems that they discussed with you that are all end of life. No more parts can be sourced.
There you go, Eddie. I, I mean, I, I'm just, I, I don't know how we can survive, I really don't. I mean, and I know you got to have cameras nowadays, that's very, very important, but heaven's sake.
I don't know how we beat the system, but the problem with that is that, you know, the cameras are gonna cease to work, and without them, we're, we're prone to a lot of blowback, but I get your point, I get.
I may not be here, but I can promise you within ten years' time, them right there will be over there in the dumpster, half a million dollars worth of cameras.
They will have a life expectancy.
A million the next.
Yeah, there'll be a million next time, yeah.
Agree with you, but I figure if we don't do it, we'll pay more than that in attorney fees.
Well, I, I, I know that, that they're, they're, they're important, I'm not saying that, but this, this just.
Just the frequency replacement.
I mean, okay, let me ask you this, the, the forty-eight Motorola M five hundred in-car camera systems now, do they absolutely not work? Can they not get by one more year with them? Does anybody know that?
They presented on, they are, they are at end of life.
They can't get, my understanding was they can't get the parts correct, and that the data don't come off of them like they should, which is the whole purpose of having the system to begin with.
And who told you that?
They told us that standing right there a couple weeks ago.
And, and end of life, I'm, I've, I've always wondered what end of life mean, is that us dying or them dying or the radio dying?
Means a combination of part, part replacement, sourcing.
And software.
And software.
And yes, they too have an expiration, and, and they'll figure out a way that you're gonna need seven, ten years for one of those reasons.
Ten years.
Or less.
And then, of course, the annual narcotics vehicle trade-in, that's at twenty-five thousand. So that's, that's all the capital, as you can see, there were just over five point two million dollars in requests, total recommended nine hundred and fifty-seven thousand, nine hundred and ninety-seven dollars, and half of that are the cameras, in-car cameras.
Sandy, if you wouldn't mind, find out from the sheriff if there is an annual subscription fee for these forty-eight in-car cameras? I'd just like to know.
And then Enterprise Fund, the landfill fund, fully enclosed hydraulic scrap magnet replacement at thirty-five thousand, large equipment, also with the grapple at ten thousand, and then the third item is the lease, capital lease for the bow bag compact.
That's okay, you don't have to do it right now, please. No, sir, no, ma'am, no, not right now.
And the compact release is three twenty-seven, nine seventeen. And that's the, all of the capital requests.
That's nine, nine thousand, eight hundred and thirty-three dollars per camera.
All right, are we good with those? Good, but accept them. Any discussion on any of them?
I think we're speechless.
The. Let's see. Four point two percent increase in the sheriff's office line item there, three hundred and sixty-one thousand, eight twenty-nine. Is that? Is that, is that attributable, that's a different line item than the jail, is that attributable to the, the cameras? What, what does that four point two percent increase attributable to in the sheriff's office, GS one sixty-two point one? Do you know?
I'm gonna look.
Okay.
It does include the cameras, that four point two percent.
Pardon me?
It does include the cameras, the four point two percent in the sheriff's office does.
Okay, so... I'm in a commissioners meeting. That, so that, that would get about all of that increase, I guess, wouldn't it?
It's a substantial.
It's over, yeah, and it's, it'd be a decrease without-
Yeah, actually, yeah. I, I, the other thing to ask him is, you know, I, I understand that it's extraordinary times and, and all that stuff and inflation and everybody's just trying to do the best they can and just get by. Are, are the cameras, find out, and, and maybe he, he did say that up here, I, I don't remember, I get information overload. Find out if, if, if those cameras, what end-of-life means for those cameras. I mean, are they just not functional? Are they quitting operating? Are they not reliable? And, and and personally, I don't, I mean, I'm not in, and you guys can weigh in, I'm not trying to dominate the conversation, but I'm not in favor of approving the county budget tonight. You know, I, I think the citizens need a little more time to digest some of this, but anyway, between, and, you know, they may wanna pass it tonight, and that's fine, it's, you know, but... That covers five years. So I wonder what happens in five years? But it lasts five years and runs out in five years? Yeah, yeah, you'd have to, I, I don't-
You're right. So you're just paying for the license fee for six year, five years, and then you would renew it, but the cameras would still work?
Yeah, and there'd be no, and there'd be no telling how much the license fee would be for... So they got deputy cars going around with, the, the cameras aren't working. Nine functioning cameras. Okay, and, and, and he's forty, do we have forty-eight patrol cars? I mean, does forty-eight, is there forty-eight deputy cars in Surrey County? And Sandy, you don't have to get all this information now, so...
Yes. Detective Difson, I think everybody has one.
I, I guess it's just a bad year for half a million dollars worth of cameras to go out. I, I just, you know... Okay.
Any comments on anything yet? All right. Sheriff, you got something else?
Um, yeah, I was, um, the, um, there's eighty thousand dollars for Surrey Community College on a vehicle there.
There is.
Tell, tell me a little bit, and, and, you know, I must apologize, I'm on the college board and... But, you know, this, a lot of this is for public consumption anyway. What, do you, you know anything about that, Chris, there?
That number's usually static each year for equipment and vehicle replacement.
Yeah.
It's not all of the technical, it's, it's-
Right.
Capital expenses throughout the campus.
It's, it's for, but it's, this is specifically for vehicle maintenance.
It's eighty thousands, well, for equipment and vehicle maintenance, yeah. It's not just vehicle maintenance, it's also equipment maintenance on the campus.
Oh, so it's equipment?
It's both.
But, but it says, just so I'm clear, equipment and vehicle maintenance, meaning equipment outside of vehicles on campus? Okay.
Yep.
Yeah, I know we've got some cars on grants and things at Surrey Community College. You know, a car on a college campus is, uh, you know, it's just, um, I mean, Surrey Community College campus is quite small. I, I know you need perhaps a car or two over there.
You got their public safety.
Yeah.
You've got some, I think, no, they've got some passenger vans and some maintenance vehicles, so I would assume this would cover all of those.
Okay.
But then again, also, it's, you know, various equipment scattered around the campus that they would be performing maintenance or repair on as well. But typically, that number's been static for a while. It's, the request has been eighty thousand consistently.
It was sixty-five thousand from twenty-twenty until twenty-twenty-three, and then twenty-four, and the current year, twenty-five, it's been eighty thousand.
I think I'd like some more information on that, given the fact that we have cut vehicles out of our own departments in the county and equipment, given the size of the campus. I, and granted it's static, it's not specific to something, I think I'd like to know more about that before saying yes.
Well, I'm, I'm just looking for savings is what I'm, you know, that, that, but I'm not, I'm on the college board, but-
Historical records of the invoices that they send to us, what makes up that eighty thousand, I don't have it for this year yet. But, like, I have the invoice for twenty-twenty-four, and it lists four different things, so if you guys are interested in looking at that, I've got that information.
Okay.
Can you, can you just briefly say what, you want more?
Um, there is one that was to Capital Chevrolet, to Casco Electric, Steve Chandler Electric, and a vendor I'm not familiar with.
That's, that's equipment stuff, yeah.
Or it-
Okay, yeah, so probably a lot of this is, is equipment and maintenance on equipment, I would imagine. The, the other question I, I have is to, I mean, at the end of the year, are, are a lot of departments in Surrey County turning in a lot of money? I mean, like, the big departments, sheriff's department, it's the largest department, I mean, and, you know, I guess, well, and DSS is, is the largest, correct? Is that right? And health, yeah. Are, are they-
Sheriff's the largest.
Yeah, sure.
Public education.
Yeah, it, are, are they turning in any monies at the end of the year unspent? It, it reverts back to the general fund? I, I understand, but how much, I, I guess my question is how much buddies is it? I mean, are, are our department heads and, and, and people that run the county departments and in charge of the taxpayers' money? Are they, you know, are they, at the, towards the end of the year, are they holding the line? Or, or they got monies left in all these line items in the budget? And they're saying, "Good gracious, boys, we're gonna have to spend it here, 'cause on June thirtieth, so getting here fast," you know? I mean, you see that in government, I guess, I'm... So they try to turn monies, but try to not spend monies, okay?
If you recall the slideshow from the nineteenth, the average over the last ten years was eighty-nine percent of budget was spent. That was the average.
About ten percent of it.
Yep.
Okay, well, that's pretty good.
And the POs, purchase orders are cut off in mid-May.
Yeah, end of May, and then it's just a case-by-case. If it's really needed, we say, "Go ahead and turn in a PO in June."
So that sort of tells any large spending in the last month and a half of fiscal year.
Fisher River. They've been good stewards throughout the year to have that money left over in case something happens, so...
You guys got anything there? I don't-
None on capital.
Okay. I'm good.
All right, fee schedule changes. We'll start with development services.
Well, both the development services fees, recommended fee schedule for next year and the emergency services recommended fee schedule for next year are included within the recommended budget, so the revenue calculations include those. As an example, for emergency services, it was roughly a mega-dollar increase in revenues. So that was a help in the situ, in this current situation. For development services, a lot of those fees had not been increased in over almost twenty-five years. And for a lot of things like rezoning, special use permits and variances, or excuse me, special use permits, the fees collected did not even cover the costs of legal advertising. So at a bare minimum, you would wanna recoup your costs for legal advertising, maybe not so much staff time, but, um, so I believe that, especially in development services, long overdue. And, of course, the EMS fee schedule was something they worked on with our collection agency related to what was billable and potentially collectible through Medicaid, Medicare, so, you know, both of those are recommended, and, of course, on the public work side, you remember the presentation on the nineteenth, we were recommending the household fee at fifty-seven dollars now, and the tipping fee at fifty dollars?
Yes, tipping fee at fifty dollars and the household at fifty-seven.
Fifty-seven.
And it, it's in your packets, somewhere buried in there. Okay, Brandy says it's the last set of hipers in your packets.
And one of those clips. Looks like this first page, you got the one.
Mark this packet right here, very last section, this clip, yeah, you got your hand on the back of it right there.
Good with that.
I just think for people listening, you know, public works, landfill is the enterprise fund, and it has to generate the money to operate all equipment bought, we talk about in the, in the budget, the compactor, all that comes out of the enterprise fund, and we're kinda in the rears on that enterprise fund. And so we felt we felt like we needed to go up at a separate property taxes, that's assessed to every, every citizen that has property. They pay, they pay that landfill fee, and then the folks dump trash at the landfill, they pay fifty dollars per ton.
Yes.
Fifty dollars per ton. So that's just, uh, just for information as to why, why that, there's a little bit of increase there.
So with this increase, how would we let the citizens know what these increases are?
They'll be, you know, posted to landfill online on the tax, but the, the landfill fee is on the tax bill, so that's paid with your taxes. Tipping fees, you know, paid on, you know, as you visit landfill.
Yes.
There you go.
Yeah, I believe the tipping fee twenty nineteen, is that correct?
Correct.
Was the last time it was increased, so that's, I know during the pandemic, we really tried to hold the line on it. So we normally wouldn't go that long between increases.
Any comments? One good? Are we ready to move on?
You on the whole thing, these fees in general, we still-
Emergency services, mail, what services?
I'm good with recommendations.
Yes. Special care transports and rural mileage. Good question.
They, a couple of these.
Especially care transports went from thousand fifty to zero. Rural mileage eighteen plus went from fifteen to zero. Uh, ALS NEAO four twenty-six went from four ninety, zero. ELS EA zero four two nine, or four two eight, went from four forty to zero. It was given to us. Did that have anything to do with life?
I just checked the rec, uh, the requested budget binder to see if there was anything addressed in the budget message, but I didn't see anything in the EMS information.
No, I know you did at the first works.
Yes, he did, yeah, but I don't, I don't recall why it would be zero.
Take short break. Be right back. All right, we're back. Personnel expansion. Let me let me get back EMS, the questions we had. They didn't go back to zero. They remain as they are, as they were. So there's no change in it. It's just put zero there as a meaning that they're staying the same. Okay, now we'll move on to personnel expansion, DSS only. This is a request by the state that we added employees in DSS. And we have granted their request and hopefully this will enhance DSS to be able to handle the workload efficiently, more efficiently and take some of the hardships off of the social workers. They've got big caseloads and just will alleviate some of that. So that's my comments on it. And anyone else?
Mr. Chairman, I just want to say I agree a hundred percent with you and the DSS is one of the most important departments we have in Surrey County. It's one of our core functions. And these employees have been under a lot of duress and stress and understaffed. Just been a whole litany of things and and I hope this alleviates a lot of the problem. They've done an outstanding job. Sharon Schuneman and her team, and I just can't say enough good things about what they've done here in the last Sharon's been here and very, very well pleased.
Echo those comments that it is desperately needed, that the work that they do. You don't understand it until you do it or you walk beside of them. I've not done it, but I've walked beside of them and it takes a special person to do that, and I hope that we can find those people to fill these positions.
It's a different world in DSS today. It is the culture and the climate in which we live. It's a stressful job. Unfortunately, businesses picked up over the years. There's all kinds of problems out there. Foster foster care needs and child needs and broken families and chaos and and yes, it's been a big increase in this department, but one that we felt like we can know, we cannot ignore it and we must address it. So I concur.
Same.
Right. Good deal. Okay, next is county employee COLA. Recommended two percent. Any comments?
Where is that in our, is that that's in this front piece here?
Last page.
Last page.
Form of the breakdown. It's.
Last page on the form.
Yep, salary reserve first row.
We got a cheat. Yeah, same thing.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'd like to ask county manager to explain what goes in to a COLA and each department, how they disperse the monies from their departments to accommodate a COLA within their departments.
During the budget cycle each year, HR gives me a calculation on different percentages for COLA. It's one of the last things that I look at before I finish the recommended budget. This number typically is half of what that total is. Historically, we've never needed more than half, if any. As an example, as you get to the budget year, if the department's budget is able to absorb the COLA, then this money doesn't get moved out of this line. It's only moved and it's only moved to certain departments if they need it. It's not moved lock, stock and barrel. So Laura could give you, you know, a better handle on her time here, how that has factored in, but last year with some of the salary studies, that's where that money was. So some of that got moved out, but in a typical year, we don't really move, if any, very little of this out.
But it's recurring.
It is, but you have, especially for larger departments, you have attrition, you have vacancies. It is, but you have, especially for larger departments, you have attrition, you have vacancies, you have times where there is no salary coming out for those positions. That's how it gets absorbed. They may have large expenses and other lines that don't occur. So when you adopt the budget, you adopt a total for each department. The line items are really managed internally. Department heads can move money between line items if they need to. So at the end of the day, as long as they stay below that total, their total budget, and there's a cola, and you get to the end of June and they're still under budget, there's no transfer. If there's a transfer, it only occurs into May.
I typically try and look at it in April and see who's close. And I think, I don't think I moved at all. There was a little bit left over when I did that this year, that budget amendment.
Hand me that sheet, Sandy. That sheet you showed me earlier. Yeah. Well, at some point, it'll catch you if you do a 5% cola this year and 5% next year and 2% the next year. And the last two or three years, the 3%, I mean, at some point, I mean, all that's not going to be absorbed, is it?
I think the trick is not to elevate it from time to time.
That's just how the histories work. Plus, you know, in a given year, if you have, let's say you have two people who have 20 plus years' experience and they retire and you replace them, well, you're going to be paying those people less. So when you think about all those moving pieces, that's how most of these colas get absorbed because you have so much of that going on throughout county government. With over 700 employees, there's a lot of movement each year. So I mean, that's just the way it's always been factored in.
That's why companies get rid of the high-paid employees and replace them with low-paid employees. Yeah. Yeah, right at retirement, yeah.
Now, though, that happened every year. I can't guarantee you it will. I'm just telling you historically, that's what's occurred.
So this is interesting. This goes back to 1969. That was the year I was sworn in on the board here. That's funny. Okay, so in 2023, it was 5% cola, 22, 5%, 21, 2%, 2020, 2019, 2%, 2018, 1 and 1/2, 2017, 2, 16, 2, 15, 1.5. You know, all I'll say about it is, you know, I understand all that. And we, you know, we're just looking for ways to tighten our belt. And I know these are inflationary times and people's cost of living and buying groceries and all those things are more. And we certainly want our county employees well compensated. And I think we've achieved that. I think we've done that in Surrey County. I just would like to see a little savings on that number maybe, but.
I'll propose a 1.5% increase. And I think, look, historically, we've done 5%, 5%. We've, you know, kind of made up for that zero year and understand that this is a tough budget year. 1.5% would give us a little bit of savings.
How much savings would that give us, Laura?
25% savings.
300 and something. 310.
Times 0.25.
It would...
87, 500.
It would bring the number down to 262,500. So yes, a savings of 87,500.
How much savings are we up to tonight that we've talked about?
You got it, Laura.
195,225 dollars.
That's counting 100%?
Yes.
Say that one more time, please. I just cleared it.
Oh, okay. It's okay.
I'll run through the sheet. So you saved $86,058 from the capital for students. You added 28,333 for the Millennium SRO, 50,000 savings from the FIRE grant, and 87,500 in savings from the cola.
So total, that's 195,225 dollars in savings.
That's not even a half a cent on the tax increase.
Savings from the recommended budget.
Yes.
Yes. Yeah, as it was originally proposed. I'm good with your suggestion, Mr. Gores.
I had something here on municipal increases on what, on my notes here. Would that have been something to do with Mount Airy? What? Maybe it was just my scratching. It means nothing.
While he's looking, Commissioner Hat, do you have any comments on that?
Yes, sir. I'm good with ones and a half.
Yeah, I'm good. I'm good with one and a half.
Do we have a consensus? All right. And we definitely want to thank all our employees to try to be fair. And we appreciate every moment you put into making Surrey County move. A lot of movers and shakers. So we thank you all. Does anyone have any special requests that we want to go over before we move on? Just not in the line items? Don't everybody speak at one time?
We got some.
I got a few. We got 50,000 for Mountain Sea Trail. And, you know, I'm an advocate for outdoors and what have you. But I think in lieu of where we're at, I would say, you know, take that one out of the budget, so it's $50,000 that we can save and hopefully put back in at a later time. But if you're agreeable, it's $50,000 of savings.
Comments?
I concur.
I'm good.
Good. Which one?
I will. Also, and I know in the years past, we've debated on funding nonprofits. I think in lieu of where we're at, you know, maybe in the future, that, you know, I don't know where that came into being that we funded so many of these. But we have them in the budget. I would propose that I would use the money that I have invested in Surrey money to fund those this time. So those folks, that'll be a year-to-year if we have money. You know, we'll try to help you if we don't understand that there may not be money in the future. So I would say Yoke Fellow, Helping Hands, and Surrey Arts Council, just pull those from the budget and I will use the invested Surrey money for those entities. And I'll also add a few youth foundations. I've had some folks reach out to me, so I'll add to that. But you can pull the ones in the budget out. I will share with those folks out of that investment story money.
You said Yoke Fellow, Helping Hands, and what was that?
Surrey Arts Council. Yeah. And I'd also order the Mount Airy Museum. And I'd like to sit down and talk to him. He didn't request any money from the city of Mount Airy. He has to pull that 20,000 as well.
I am going to use some more of my investment survey money to use some of it for Cooper News Foundation. And we've got a few more requests. And I believe pretty shortly my nonprofit money will be gone also.
While we're having that conversation about that pot of money that we can spend with nonprofits, we saw Elizabeth Miller ask us last night for additional funding from, other than what was asked for in neighborly, to bring them up to what it costs to run that intensive family program for parenting path. I would like to, from that money, give her an additional $8,000. And for those?
From Invest in Surrey?
Yes, from Invest in Surrey. And then also, the Children's Center of Surrey has taken on an enormous feat of doing something that we've never had in Surrey County before, which is a children's advocacy center. For those who don't know what that is, it is a forensic center that does interviews with children after they've been abused. And right now, as it stands, when a child is taken into custody at DSS that has been abused, it may take weeks to months for that child to have the appropriate interview that they need to find out exactly what has happened with that child. And I think that's a horrible injustice to a child to suffer abuse, to be put into foster care with a family and that family doesn't know what that child has suffered. Then to wait weeks to have that interview, it's pulling the Band-Aid off, not only that, but pouring salt in the wound again, putting them back. In order to get them started down the road for where they have to go to their next step, they've got a staff member they need to hire. So I'd like to help them with that from that investment survey with $40,000.
I see a Seems Ministry on there from Pilot Mountain. It's also one of the pages I know in my district. It's a good organization to do a good cause. I too have a little bit of Surrey invested Surrey monies. And since that's in my district, I will obligate the $5,000 to that organization.
What organization?
Seems Ministries organization.
Food pantry.
Food pantry.
That leaves one food pantry in Elk.
Tri-County.
Tri-County. Do you want to fund them from your Invest in Surrey allocation?
Did, they're not in your recommended budget?
They are.
They are.
5,000 usually for each food pantry. So the others are being funded with Invest in Surrey this next time.
Yeah. Yeah. We'll pull that one out and use the Invest in Surrey monies. Yeah. Or use my monies. Or the monies that Invest in Surrey was on my board.
foothills didn't ask anything. Where's foothills? They didn't ask for this?
We didn't get a request. There was no request this year.
I'll check with them. I'll check with foothills. Who's contact foothills, do you know?
I can get that name for you.
All right, thank you.
I have it in my file.
The, did... I noticed the Shepherd House is in there, $28,800. Didn't we, didn't we give them an Invest in Surrey allocation, some sort of allocation? I don't remember how much it was.
Yes, indirectly.
Was it the 19577? Yep.
They did get an Invest in Surrey?
They did. What's in the annual budget for the last few cycles for Shepherd's House and?
The Ark?
The Ark. Is we came up with a per-bed number. If we were going to fund them, we were going to fund them per bed.
What is in here for the Ark? I don't see the Ark in here.
It's on the next page. No, it's...
I don't see it at all.
It should be number 45, 11,700.
It's where?
We don't have them. It should be under Grace Clinic and Surrey Medical Ministries. Is it not showing up?
No, it was spreadsheet.
Okay, there is 11,700 recommended for them. And then below them is American Red Cross, $10,000 recommended.
It's...
On our sheet.
Okay. It, this may have accidentally gotten hidden or something. We do a lot of moving on here. But it is, that should be on there. 11,700 for the Ark, 10,000 for American Red Cross. And then Surrey Medical Ministries would be right above the Ark for their $50,000 pledge, the four out of five.
Okay, so, all right, I'm getting, so I got to write this down. So you've got in your recommended budget for Echo Ark. Is that how you call it?
Echo Ministry and then the Ark, 11,700.
But it's the same thing?
It is. Yeah, it's all.
11,000 what?
700.
All right, keep going. What else was left out?
American Red Cross, $10,000. And then Surrey Medical Ministries, $50,000 for Pledge Four of Five.
Better leave 50,000 for 26.
That was how much Surrey Medical on the writing?
50,000. And then, there was another one. Shepherd's House is in here for how much? 28?
28,800. So Echo, Ark, and Shepherd's House. In fiscal year '24, the board adopted a $450 per bed formula for homeless shelters. If you were going to fund them, which is a year-to-year thing, that's the formula the staff uses to come up with a number.
Well, I guess the problem I got is they got Invest in Surrey monies. And then, I mean, did Ark get, did Echo get Invest in Surrey monies?
How much on Shepherd's House in this? I'm not seeing.
28, 28, 8.
They received 9,000.
9,000 Invest in Surrey. Is that right?
Yes.
So there's 28,000 proposed on a sheet that's not in my spreadsheet for Shepherd's House is in addition to the...
That is on the spreadsheet. This is the bottom page.
The Shepherd's House on the spreadsheet. Which you'll see Grace Clinic and all of them is down there at the very bottom. No, it's right under... Yeah, Yoke Fellow, Food Pantry, foothills, tri-county ministries.
But one sheet. Yeah, okay. All right. Yep, I'm with you.
Yeah, it should just be, I think those other three were hidden. I'm sorry about that. But they're on here.
They're included, but they're not on our sheets.
They were hidden accidentally.
Whether they're in the annual budget, that's, you know, they were in there last year. you know, they were in there last year, year before. But, I mean, that's completely at the board's discretion.
Well, and, and how much money did Shepherd's House get in the Invest in Surrey? Tell me again, I'm sorry.
They receive directly a hundred nine nine thousand, five hundred and seventy-seven.
They used it all?
Yes.
And that was just what, last year?
Um yeah, twenty-two, twenty-three is when you originally set this program. I think it was used for debt, was it not? Yep.
Well, we set up a formula for the per beds, but you know, it was if we funded, not when we funded. But I mean, that would be a decision tonight about this budget for the additional twenty-eight.
As you can see, they asked for more than that. But the formula was used for the
Yeah, I understand.
I understand.
So per, so what, how would the formula differ from the request?
They asked, Shepherd's House asked for seventy thousand, or excuse me, sixty thousand, seven hundred and twenty-four. The four fifty per bed brings it to twenty-eight, eight hundred.
Yeah, that's, so that's where you got your request. It was part of the formula.
Mm-hmm.
How is the, I, I mean, are these places staying full? Do you know? Do you, do you have any report on any of this? I mean, is it, is it staying full or what, what? I don't know anything about it. I mean, all I know is I'm trying to cut money here.
I don't know what their occupancy level is, that, it may what information I do have is they're, they're, I don't know if they're full, but they, they have a lot of activity. Especially the Shepherd's House. I'm not as familiar with the ARC personally, but it's the smaller facility, as you know.
I hate, I hate to be the boogeyman.
Well.
You know, I just.
If we can cut ambulance chassis, we can cut other things. It's not core mandated function, so I mean.
These, these places, my hunches are getting a substantial amount of grant monies. I mean, I have no proof of that, but I, I can imagine they would get a lot of grant monies. I like I said, never let a crisis go to waste.
Would you have a suggestion?
What's your recommendation?
Well, I, I, I mean, I'd cut the ARC half and Shepherd's House half. I mean, well, I mean, if, if I was the king, I'd probably cut it all out, but I mean, I don't wanna be, you know, but.
For sake of uh discussion, since we're on the cutting, I, I would be willing to concur with the cutting in half for both. Again, extreme year, extreme times. We didn't buy all the ambulance chassis that we needed, or they requested that they needed.
I'm trying to buy some, I'm trying to buy forty-eight radios or cameras or something over there.
Mr. Height?
I think I can leave it at that. Given what we're having to cut out of our own department.
Alright, cut ARC and Shepherd's House in half. Consensus? Yes, I have, you have mine?
Alright, now, I'll just I have money, I'll, I'll just, we can take that one out too, and I'll just pay that out of Invest in Surrey.
The half.
I, I'll take, I'll pay the Shepherd's House, this is in my district.
Entire amount?
Entire amount.
Take out twenty-eight, eight hundred?
Fourteen.
Oh, fourteen, four hundred, okay.
I'll do the ARC. Out of my money. Can I go back to question the um Shepherd's House? Am I taking the full amount?
You're taking twenty-eight, eight out.
Okay.
And it would have been fourteen, it'd been a fourteen floor, I'll cover the fourteen floor.
Thank you. And also, the ARC is coming out. And that leaves American Red Cross for.
Half, half of the ARC.
Just same thing with Shepherd's House, half and half. Take half, half, we'll cover the half of Invest in Surrey.
They're taking half of their quest away, covering the other half with their Invest in Surrey money.
I'm not taking twenty-eight, eight out. I'm taking fourteen, four out.
Correct.
No, she's taking.
Taking the whole thing out.
Taking it all out.
Taking it all.
Just take it all out. Yeah, take it all out and we'll, we'll pay the half.
Thanks. Yes, that, that sounds good. Got it.
Again, that's, and then in the future.
Yeah, going forward, year to year. Alright, is everybody good with that?
No change to American Red Cross.
We've done that for.
Yeah. Thirty years, Tom, yeah.
Any more special requests? Alright, how much have we pulled out of budget?
Three hundred and thirty-seven thousand, seven hundred and twenty-five dollars.
Is that right, Laura? About half a cent?
Uh, yes, cuz the one penny was seven Sorry, the screen is smaller. Seven hundred ninety-one thousand, seven hundred is one cent, so.
A little less than that, but includes motor vehicle.
Uh
I think so.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Including motor vehicle.
Alright. The next topic is the one we've knocked all the way down to the bottom. So we've discussed all these items, line items. Uh, the recommended property tax rate is fifty-one point eight. Current is fifty-five point two. Revenue neutral would be forty-nine point six. I'm for discussion. Being that we've took out three hundred and seven thousand, got a manager, what is yours?
Laura, what would that get them? What would that check?
Recommendation.
Um, we'll do a calculation for you and see what that would change.
No, we're not. We've, it's last. We, 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 we went first to last to first.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
That for the resolution.
He had a go.
Chris, what does your crystal ball say on? I mean, I hadn't read a lot of economic forecasts, but I mean, some of them's gloom and doom, some of them's, you know, real optimistic. What, what, what do you, what do you think on sales tax, on, on sales tax revenue?
Lot of it depends on the tariff situation and
Yeah, I mean, there's.
The shake, you know, how that's all gonna shake out. And that's not normally something we have to factor in, so it's kinda hard to predict, but um even with all that being said, I think um you have about a million dollars in the recommended budget that are, is, is a sort of a, a one-year expense if all goes schedule.
We've gotten stuff that's, that's non-recurring.
That's right.
It's gonna drop out.
Some of it's occurred in the current budget and we've absorbed that, and then we've got some for next year. And it may not take all of that, so. Um, but, you know, typically, when, when you have a slowdown, you know, you sort of bottom out and, and you, you immediately start to recover to some extent.
Mm-hmm.
And, and we've still seen this year in the last twelve months, we've seen a lot of economic, economic activity in Surrey County.
Mm-hmm.
We've had quite a few.
Yeah.
Um, we got some.
Looked good on next year's budget item.
Yeah, we've got quite a, quite a bit of new investment, so um I'm, I'm kind of optimistic at this point.
You're, you're either neutral or optimistic. You're certainly not pessimistic.
Not pessimistic. I, I think there's a lot of good things occurring. I think people are just sort of waiting to see what happens. One of the things about this situation is that the job market was um there weren't enough workers to fill the jobs that were out there. So even some contraction in the job market isn't necessarily gonna put people without options to go to work.
Mm-hmm.
And that's a big part of a, of a recession or a slowdown. So obviously, we're going through somewhat of a reset. And, you know, but I'm still optimistic that we're going to here in this community, we're gonna weather that fairly well. And I'm just basing on that what I see on the ground here. We don't see an unemployment issue right now. We see people basically just holding on to their money.
Mm-hmm.
But we are a consumption society now. And so, more so than we were during the Great Recession.
You know, I mean, I know we're sitting in here and, and going through all these numbers and stuff, but you know, the thing I ha- have to always think about is um is these municipalities, Elkin and Mount Airy, and I, I'm not even sure what Elkin's doing to the tax rate. Do you know what Elkin's doing to their tax rate?
I don't know.
Um, well, you know, most, Mount Airy's, how much is, Bill, do you know how much their, their?
They're, they voted to leave it at sixty uh, at their first budget retreat. Uh, my understanding has been some discussion on lowering it, uh, but that, that doesn't mean it'll happen. Uh, they come in Thursday night and, and do sixty cents, so I, I don't know.
I mean, their tax rate's gonna be sixty. Let's just say ours is, well, let's just say ours is fifty-one, so that's, that's a dollar and ten cents. And then
Downtown.
And then you got a special school tax that's ten. So that's a dollar and, well, let's just say dollar twenty, uh, rough numbers per hundred dollar valuation. So that's a a hundred and twenty bucks on a hundred thousand dollar house. That's two forty on a two hundred thousand dollar house. And you know, and you put the landfill fees in it, you put the fire, this, that, and the other, and you put the uh, you know, the whole tax burden. You have to look at it in its entirety and, and yeah, I just.
The commissioner is on this.
Yeah.
Pays all three. I pay.
Yeah. Yeah. You, you fully understand, yeah. And.
Spare downtown district.
You, you then close to that, you, you possibly could pay the, they're not, they're not immune.
I've heard, uh, Mercer told me that on Main Street Saturday. He said, don't forget that one. I'm paying that, I pay another one.
So, wait a minute now, Laura, figure, do the numbers on that. So let's just say a dollar and twenty cent uh, tax rate on a hundred thousand dollar house. That's, that's twelve hundred, that's twelve hundred bucks, isn't it? Yeah, it's twelve hundred. I said a hundred and twenty. I, I, I was way off. So it's a hu- it's twelve hundred bucks. So a three hundred thousand dollar house is thirty-six hundred dollars.
Is that right?
Yeah, I'm getting on up there, get to a million, I'll get to your house, Bill, so.
You won't get close to a million.
Bill, you were pretty close. It would, um, with that savings, our tax rate could go down to fifty-one point three eight cents.
A penny and a half, pretty much.
Fifty-one point three eight soon.
And.
Fifty-one point eight three.
Point three eight.
Point three eight.
And
Drop just.
You know. I mean and you know, these valuations have gone up. And
That's a ninety, ninety-seven percent.
Ninety-seven point five is what I calculated that at.
It's gonna be better. It's gonna be better.
Yes.
So, anyway, you know, I don't know, I just uh death and taxes, I guess, that's about the only thing we can be sure of, so. Y'all saying an even number, just one penny?
Right, even after number, to get rid of, to get rid of a digit.
Oh, yeah.
Fifty-one point three.
Let's just unbalance up a little bit. On it.
Push it up about three hundred.
Yeah, let me calculate how much that would push that up.
What, if you just do a penny? Is that what you're saying?
Fifty-one, three.
Fifty-one, three, that's, so that's one point four above revenue neutral, one penny, point four.
Um.
Revenue neutral, four nine. Or.
Even a penny and a half.
Penny and a half.
Yeah. It was two point two, so yeah, one point seven.
And you, and you know, with, with some of these big non-recurring stuff coming off, it gives us a little cushion for next year, you know, I mean, I mean once you, yeah.
Yeah, the, some of the fire stuff getting rolled up would be good, and then, got, we got.
That goes back over to the, the fire service and that's quarter of a million dollars there.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Few more years of Spencer Mill and then you're clear there.
Clear there.
And then with that, then that's done and you'll see some revenue, you'll see some revenue generated from that.
Mm-hmm.
Mm-hmm.
And if Amazon gets going up there, that's, that's no, another lick and Tractor Supply might do something big over Elkin, if they expand their store maybe.
North Carolina Foam, that's a big one.
It's, yeah. Well.
Project Store.
Mm-hmm.
We got, and, and we, I thought I believe some more stuff's coming on eighty-nine.
Yeah, I mean, it's been.
CC Camp, there's a development plan there.
Yeah, there's some stuff going in on CC Camp, yeah.
Yeah.
So.
Outlook looks pretty, pretty good, a whole lot better than it is for this year. So I think, I believe we're on the uptick for next year. Good items.
I wonder how much, you know, Project Store and pro- the, the project that was in Pilot Mountain are related to tariffs. Cause it's an increase in manufacturing domestically.
That's, you know, that's a, you know, affects a lot of infrastructure, like water and sewer, I mean, I'm, I'm on the, on the State Water Infrastructure Authority. And it's it's killing those programs.
Mm-hmm.
Cause they'll build a project, everybody said we don't have the there's.
That's what, yeah, that would be. If we go to fifty, fifty-one point three, it would be one point.
That would render.
Or one point seven above revenue.
Yeah, yeah.
One point seven above revenue.
What does that do to the?
I'm still figuring.
You still figuring?
Real dollars. What's that do to the fund balance? Hopefully we won't have to use fund balance.
If we stay at an eighty-nine percent um, of budget, then yeah, we wouldn't touch fund balance.
But, okay, but now you were figuring revenues this year instead of ninety-eight, you were figuring it ninety-nine, is that right?
No, it's ninety-seven, ninety-seven and a half.
Okay, you figured ninety-seven and a half, okay.
You know, Penny still feels confident about being above ninety-nine percent.
Okay. Okay.
Sheet that she gave us last, it it it's looking good. What, two million above last year? So far.
You know, while they calculate, and I'm on a uh, Mr. Chairman, if I may, along the topics of last night on the Elkin City Schools presentation, and, you know, and I I want to do this for public consumption. I think people have a right to to know, um, you know, some of the financial mechanics over there. You know, when you're talking about, well, you know, two hundred and fifty kids out of county, all right? And Elkin's charging eight hundred. I think they're going up to eight hundred. They've always been about two hundred, and then they went to three, and then four, and then they put it off, uh, hoping that certain county commissioners would get beat, and that didn't happen. And uh but um so now they're up towards eight hundred dollars um
Yeah.
For that tuition that we pay thirteen twenty. We're gonna pay, well, thirteen thirty this year, I think. So that leaves a deficit of um five hundred and thirty bucks, okay, that that's the deficit, all right? Five hundred and thirty dollars times two hundred and fifty kids, that's a hundred and thirty-two thousand, five hundred dollars deficit. Okay? Well, then if you take then if you take two hundred and fifty kids times three hundred and thirty, which is the capital monies, and they'll never bring the capital monies, the brick and mortar monies. Two hundred and fifty times three thirty, that's eighty-two five, so that's how much? Three-ten? Okay, three hundred and ten thousand dollars. And but then, again, if you run off a certain number of out-of-county students, well, let's just hypothetically say that the 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 due to overcrowding, none of them come. I mean, I, you know, I I don't know, at some point, the overcrowding is is discriminatory against children that live in Surrey County because they're having to bear the burden for Elkin wanting the big state monies. That's the thing. The big, the the county monies are 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 thirteen thirty plus the thir- uh, three hundred and thirty bucks for the capital, the brick and mortar. The 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 per student is three uh thirteen thirty. So this, but the state gives like nine thousand and eight hundred dollars. Almost, let's just say ten thousand. So ten thousand times um times two fifty, that's two point five million dollars. So where you see what I'm saying here? It it it, I mean, and you were talking about that sweet spot last night. I mean, the the thing that people don't understand is, you know, it's patently unfair for somebody paying that special school tax, that extraordinary tax in Elkin City Limits or forever, I mean, for that matter, wherever, that they have to pay and make up that deficit for children from another county. I mean, talking about talking about an unfair taxation. And and, you know, of course, we get pressed by, you know, people on this topic. And 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 Commissioner Tucker and I were down there for a public hearing once upon a time on increasing the tax thing. And and it's always the high-income people. It's always the highly educated, high-income people. It's the same one that always begs you to pay to raise their taxes. Please raise my taxes. Please, you know, I'm I'm willing to pay it. I'm willing to pay it. Well, guess what? That everybody's not willing to pay it. And and it's patently unfair, even by anyone's metrics, that citizens from one county have to pay for the public education of children from another county. Now, I I don't know how to fix this.
Wait a minute, you know, we started this, what, seven years ago?
We we started seven Yep, exactly. How to how to do this. It's it was about time you, yeah, come on aboard.
Ask that question in the budget.
Yeah. And So and and, you know, you know, we hear the cafeteria is overcrowded at Elkin. And now they're going to move the sixth grade up to the middle school. It's gonna
Is that a done deal?
Well, I my understanding is they're pretty set on it, you know, but the the thing is, you know, at some point, the overcrowding is the straw that is going to break the camel's back here. I mean, I would want my kid to go to a overcrowded school that was that was overcrowded because of children from another county, would you? I mean, there's an element of fairness here. And like I said, you know, I don't know how you mesh all these together and 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 get a a school system that's uh that is financially sound for the long term. I mean, back in the day, it was just fine when I was there.
Back in the day, we looked at students as students, not market shares.
Yeah.
And that's the problem. That that term appeared about seven or eight years ago, that when they decided they could market for students outside of the district to increase their viability. And I think that's what we've gotten ourselves into. They're not they're not looking at them. They don't see them as students.
Yeah, they come as money.
On another subject,
Yeah.
Chairman, if I may, uh, in reference to last night's meeting, just happened to be last night, we talked about some of these issues we're talking about and then budget tonight. We also talked about one and spent a little time on it called uh by the state of North Carolina, salary spiking, pension spiking. You know, I got to thinking about that last night. I thought about it again today, some. I called some on some county resources to little do a little bit of background, checking on to see what was possible. Based on the premise, I believe that if this board appropriates taxpayer funds to the three school systems, which we are required to do, if we support three school systems, we fund them. Typically, they have their elected officials and they pretty much run their day-to-day operations in their schools as they see fit. But my questions today were, do we have the right to put any kind of restriction on school, public school funding allocations? And the answer is I've got is, and it, of course, all this is going to have to bear out some legal opinion, but I want it questioned and 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 I'll talk to you about it, Chris, our county manager. General statute, North Carolina General Statute one fifteen C dash four twenty-nine. It basically says, upon receiving the budget from the superintendent and following the public hearing on such such dates, if one is held, the Board of Education shall consider the budget and make such things. But the Board of County Commissioners shall complete its action on the school budgets on or before July the first. Or such later date may be agreeable to the Board of Education. The Commissioners, this board, shall determine the amount of county revenues to be appropriated in the county budget ordinance to the local school administration administrative unit for the budget year. The Board of County Commissioners may, in its discretion, allocate part or all of its appropriation by purpose, function, or project as defined in the uniform budget format. Based on that, Mr. Manager, do you believe this board could restrict funding to the public education systems, the three that we fund in Surrey County, if we were to pick out an item that we expressly said would be restricted from their ability to spend money on?
Yeah, Laura and I talked about this. We 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 feel that would be okay, uh, pending, you know, review by the county attorney.
Well, pending review of the county attorney, of course, um, I'm, we're just throwing out some things here. But if we were to take such an action or if this board were to be interested in taking an action on that, would not it be the right timing to do so right here at budget time before we pass the county, the the fiscal budget?
It was Laura's opinion it needed to be part of the budget ordinance, which would go to the language um defined in the uniform budget format.
Yeah. And basically, and I hate to take your time, but what that restriction would say is there will be no, there will be no funds appropriated by Surrey County to Elkin City Schools, Mount Airy City Schools, or Surrey County Schools in the fiscal year twenty-five, twenty-six, which shall be used directly or indirectly to increase salaries, benefits, or other forms of compensation in a matter that constitutes salary spiking, it says here in my format, which we talked about last night, state referring to as pension spiking. That im- that would uh and other applicable provisions of the North Carolina Teachers and State Employees Retirement System laws and regulations. No funds will be appropriated to pay any invoices, charges, penalties, or actuarial liabilities accessed by the Retirement Systems Division of the North Carolina Department of State Treasurer for pension spiking or similar liabilities arising from actions taken by the L E A. And furthermore, it would not be used to reimburse any third-party employee or retiree for such pension-related cost or penalty. And for purposes of the section salary spiking, it would shall include any compensation adjustment that results in a material increase in the final average compensation used to calculate retirement benefits as described by applicable North Carolina law or administrative rules. This will be applicable to Elkin City Schools, Marion City Schools, and Surrey County Schools. And they would certify to the county manager and to this Board of County Commissioners prior to the disbursement of any county funds or personnel purpose purposes, that such expenditures are in compliance with this section. Now, if this will all pass the smell of the legal test, I would like to propose contingent upon that, that this board accepts such an action. And I guess would it be a requirement, a resolution, a part of the budget, Chris, that if the board were inclined to do such a thing, could we tentatively agree to that tonight if it were proposed by me? And could we, in fact, let that become the case attached to this new fiscal budget outlay if, in fact, it would were to bear legal scrutiny?
You're saying lo- no local monies?
No local money spent on pension spiking. And they would have to sign off and agree to it that they would not use it for that, as described.
I would support that.
So how do you suggest we move forward here tonight?
If the consensus was to include it, depending on when you adopt the budget. As you know, when you adopt the minutes at the next meeting, once the following budget adoption, the budget ordinance appears in the minutes and are part of the minutes. So what we would do is, pending legal review, if he agreed, we would include that in that budget ordinance that you would approve in the minutes. So, you know, hypothetically, if you approved it tonight, the budget, the budget ordinance would be in the minutes of this meeting that you would approve as your next meeting.
Well, I'll make a suggestion that this board consider approving that tonight. And we got a very short window to do it if we attach it to this coming fiscal budget year. And it would be my opinion that we ought to do so. And I'll let you folks weigh in.
I believe you, I believe you said it pretty pretty clearly. And I am a hundred percent in agreement with you.
I am too. And and I think since this is a little bit complex and um that we we probably need to look at just Eddie speaking here, we probably need to pass the budget the next meeting and let the county staff work on this.
Yeah, but we could go ahead in in good faith, I think, agree to this.
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely. A hundred percent. Yeah, sure.
Agreeable. And just to follow back up, um, going to a tax rate of fifty-one point three cents would only add twenty-nine thousand, seven hundred and ninety-two dollars to the fund balance number.
All right, any any further discussion on the tax rate? Do we make a motion or what?
That's up to you all. When do you want to uh?
I'd like to make a motion to um adopt twenty-five, twenty-six tax rate at fifty-one point three.
Do you have to do that with the budget? Or can you do that separate?
If you do a motion to approve the budget to incorporate all the changes agreed to herein, whether you do that tonight or at a future meeting, it's up, I mean, it's up to the board. That would be the tax rate. We would make the changes that you've suggested here.
One forward, yeah.
The reduction that she
And bring it back to us at the next meeting.
It's up to you whether you want to do it tonight or at the next meeting. If you want to see it.
We are going to have, are we, Mr. Chairman, we are going to have another meeting, I guess, aren't we?
You have your regular meeting on the sixteenth.
Meeting on sixteenth?
Yeah, we don't have to have a budget till June thirtieth, do we?
Right. You have to do it by June thirtieth.
I'm, I mean, I'm good with, I mean, get our ducks in, making sure everything's, everything's good, everything's good with what Commissioner Tucker said. I don't have a problem. Uh, and I guess it gives people a little time to chew on things and make any more comments. They won't be before before we pass it.
And get questions answered or anything else. But I believe for the most part, I think most of us are satisfied, it sounds like. And uh particularly on this last thing here, I think we're pretty clear that we're in unison on that. So
I'd like to see how that shakes out, how that shakes out in uh Well, that motion wasn't for passing of the budget. It was just for the I I mean, I'm I'm good with that. I just think, I mean, just as a total, all that goes together. It all goes together.
Okay, well, I'll do, I withdraw the motion then from uh but are are we are we agreeable with what we've done tonight?
Mr. Chairman, I I think it's, yeah.
I'm good.
Right, motion to adjourn.
What, we got one more?
We got a expenditure of opioid settlement final resolution.
Yeah, that has to be adopted the same night as the budget.
Tonight, okay.
It's on there just in case.
Nothing else?
Motion, second.
Motion by Commissioner Goins, second by Commissioner Tucker to adjourn. Any discussion? All in favor, please say.